At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Welcome, everybody. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to the government of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order and show that all council members are in attendance and would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would so move, and at the same time move, that we include as an amendment by adding the following thereto. One, a ministerial action regarding the censorship of the mayor after item 5B. And two, by waiving council rules regarding the amount of time individuals can address the council on item 5C from five minutes to 10 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we have four public hearings. If you want to comment to the council, step forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record, please. This time, place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-144 authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the city of Council Plus and Potawatomi County with regards to the Burn Justice Assistance Grant, otherwise known as JAG Program Award. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-145, approving the mayor's budget amendment ending June 30th, 2016. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This time, place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-146 authorizing disposal of the northwesterly, southwesterly alley abutting Lot N and Lots I through M in auditor subdivision of Block 6, Minster's addition, and Block 2, Bayless first addition. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-147 determining an area of the city to be a blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or the welfare of residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number Four to the Playland Park Urban Renewal Plan. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
One email protest was received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
We're going to postpone it, correct? Motion to postpone it to the, what's the date?
Two weeks from tonight.
Twenty-seventh, I think. Yeah. Or in conjunction with the, the public hearing is July 11th.
Oh, it's July 11th, excuse me.
So, motion to postpone to July 11th for...
The motion is postponed till July 11th. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
We have six resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 16-148 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with KAV Contracting LLC for the Fire Bell Plaza project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 16-149 approving the First Amendment to the agreement with Redflex Systems, Inc. for the red light photo enforcement program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I've previously made my thoughts about Redflex, oh, I'm sorry, about the red light camera program known, but my comments go more to concerns I have about continuing to do business with Redflex traffic systems. What causes me concern is the fact that last year, Chief Executive Officer of Redflex was convicted of bribery in a federal court in Chicago for bribing a public official. And later, a few months later, another Redflex officer, Executive Vice President for Sales, was likewise convicted by a federal court in Ohio for bribery of a public official. So, my concerns are that, you know, there are a number of other companies that we could have consulted and worked with on this matter, and I have concerns about continuing to do business with a company with a track record such as Redflex.
It's my understanding that those individuals are no longer with the company and the company's disowned it. I can appreciate there might be an allegation that there's a culture there. Do you have any understanding as to whether, what the current status of the company is? My understanding was is the people that were doing illegal activities left and the company disavowed them.
Yeah, they left after they were indicted.
Well, that's one way to do it, yeah.
That is. So, and Redflex continues to deny any wrongdoing in that, even though their officials were convicted for actions that took place while they were working for the company.
Didn't they pay a fine, though? And just not, you know, the language about not admitting anything wrong, but didn't they pay something? I thought they paid something substantial.
The public releases I have from the prosecutor's office, or I'm sorry, the, from the U.S. Attorney's Office in both cases notes convictions.
Okay.
Bruce?
Bruce Kelly, H-64 McKenzie Avenue. First of all, I'd like to apologize for the outbursts this afternoon. And on the red camera deal, no, I'm not in favor, but we are making more money than what we were, so we renegotiated that. And the other deal is, we are, I think, the lowest-paying city on red, on the cameras, because we set it at 100, and everybody else is going with the state fine, that is 200 and some odd dollars, and court costs, so it's almost, it's over $300 for a ticket. So, yeah, we are catching people, and it's roughly three people a day to weigh it red into paper. And the police officers, yeah, they're on other calls, but they're still writing tickets for running red lights and everything else. So, I think it averages out that with them, it is a safety deal, and it does free up the officers to do other things, but we still have a traffic enforcement, but that does still go out and writes probably more tickets than what the red light cameras are doing. It's just a thing that, once you know those cameras are there, you are slowing down and watching it. And then with our new system, I love it. The new computer program on our lights, I love it. I have gone home in the evenings, which I don't stay out late much, and if there's no oncoming track coming, those lights stay green on Broadway. And if somebody pulls up, like on, up by Kern, they'll let that car turn, and that car just gets over in the other lane, and boom, we got the light back. So, it isn't, they're not running that full cycle like they used to, and just, I mean, with no one there or anything like that. So, I appreciate that, but I'd say these red light camera, no, like I said, I don't like them, but they do deter people from running lights.
Yeah, it really is about safety and not about money, and the money goes down every year, and so, to me, that's a testament that it's helping that safety factor. I did get a phone call from a resident today that I told would, I'd bring it up. He likes the fact that the countdown timers for the pedestrian crossing, he did not realize that those are for pedestrian crossing. He thought they were to notify people of the red lights, but the fact that we don't have, the reason he found out is pedestrian. He says, "You don't have one down off the interstate exit of Manowah." And I said, "Because there's not a pedestrian crossing there." And he said, "What's that have to do with it?" So, I explained to him why they were there, but he wanted to know if there was some type of equipment that we could bring a countdown timer to that location. So, I told him I'd mention it to the traffic division.
That got taken away, though?
I thought that's one.
Yeah, that's the one.
Oh, there's a right turn one there, but there, if you're going north on the South Expressway, in that same intersection, there's one there.
Okay, okay. Because I was thinking that was the one that got...
The one on the off ramp.
Is gone.
Yeah, that's the one that got...
And I have seen two near misses with my own eyes, frankly, because I take that route almost every day. And people have figured out that they think they can get away with it. And traffics, even at a legal speed, and I suspect it's not, they're booking, coming from the north, and so, it gets interesting. You don't, you don't see as many the other direction, and you know, when you, when you look at it, and I'm sorry, there's a gentleman to speak before I...
Yes, sir. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Dave Flavin, 307 North Fortieth Street. I'm just kind of asking, what percentage is this, is this, like 50% goes to them and then 50%?
I believe it's 41.
41?
Yeah.
So, it's 41 dollars of the 100.
Out of a $100 fine.
Well, out of 100, so 41. I was right.
41, yeah, you're right. 41 percent. So, last year, fiscal year '15, from the Public Works Director Greg Reader, we brought in about $1.5 million on that. What we paid to Redflex was about $650, so the city's income was a little over $800,000.
And for that, they supply the equipment, the billing?
Yeah, they maintain it all.
Okay, and?
And they issue the tickets.
Okay, and how long is this contract good for?
It's a two-year renewal with an additional two years.
Four years. Okay, well, thank you.
You bet.
And it was mentioned, I know that Bruce mentioned, but you know, it did go up at one point to 200 a ticket, and we did fill as a council. I think several of us were on there at the time. We didn't want it to be a moneymaker necessarily, we just wanted it to be a deterrent and a safety reason, so for that, we put it back down to the 100, just so that it wasn't a huge hardship for people to get the ticket, but to continue to build it, because it has proven to be a safe, a good way to help with some of the intersections, so.
And it's still by far big enough to actually influence behavior.
Correct, yes.
You know, a $20 one wouldn't, frankly, for a lot of folks.
Right.
Some, yes, but many folks, 100, boy, you're getting into real money.
Right.
I know I slow down, and when I'm in other cities, when there aren't those countdowns, or they have countdowns, including across the river, when they have countdowns, and they're not tied to the light, it throws me off, to be honest, but those are really nice. And, you know, it has, it has done, it has altered my behavior, frankly. I'm far more careful. On the morning, I go by Blumer School, and I'd like to think I'd be careful, but I, frankly, the thought of a $100 fine does enter my mind when I get near that intersection. Of course, the kids being there, too, of course, enters my mind, but when you have that immediate penalty, and there's a policeman always on duty, because it's illegal to run a light, and I believe a moving violation if a police officer stops you, so it can be a much bigger deal, if you get a couple of those in a calendar year. But do I like them personally? No, I don't. But do I think they alter my behavior and most other folks? I do. And since, you know, I just think it is about safety, and I think we've been careful about budgeting less and less for it. I'm glad to see that we're taking in less money, frankly. Yeah, we get some money from it, and I believe it goes towards extra things for the police. If I remember last year, some of the bulletproof, the mayor will correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think it was certain, it was certain things that, I remember it, and I don't know if I remember the precise things precisely, but it covered things that the taxpayer would otherwise have to cover. And I don't even think, maybe something for the canines, but maybe I'm mistaken. It seems like a good deal on the whole. It's against the law to violate a red light. In fact, it's against the law in Iowa to run a yellow, if you didn't know that, in Iowa anyway, not Nebraska, but, and these ticket you only for running a red. So, shouldn't be doing it.
I have a few questions on that, that, once people understood that you only get a ticket if you left the intersection after it was red, that you don't get it if it turns red if you're in mid-intersection, they felt a lot better about it. They didn't understand that, so.
That's a good point, yeah.
If I could point out one additional thing, the Redflex, they make a proposed violation, and they send that video to our officers. Our officers review every one before a citation is actually issued.
The Des Moines Register noted that the rate of appeals being successful, in other words, the citation being set aside runs at over 75%.
On theirs or on ours?
With the citations being set aside.
Is that like 235? I know they were having, when they used to do the speed...
No, no, those are citations here in Council Plus.
Oh, in Council Plus, oh.
Yeah, when they're appealed, 75% of them are set aside.
First-time offender, if they're going under the speed limits when it occurs, they will sometimes get a break, depending upon all the other situations or circumstances surrounding them.
That was supplied by the Des Moines Register, who requested the numbers from City Council Plus.
Had somebody with a Corvette that liked to cruise and called, and so I referred him to Don, and he said he thought he should give him a ticket because they were going too slow, but...
Well, I think, too, most people don't appeal unless they really know.
Right.
And that would explain, you would expect that, you know, you're going to have malfunctions or whatever, so I would expect if people are appealing it, it's because they really believe they didn't do it.
Ice or snow.
Or snow, or you're avoiding another accident.
Absolutely.
As I understand it, though, a local officer looks at it and does try to double-check it.
Discussion, absolutely.
So, if you're in there when you shouldn't be, but you're trying to avoid a kid who's running into the street, well, they're not going to give you a ticket. Obviously, you've made the right choice between the two things, and...
Sliding through on ice.
Yeah, or sliding through on ice, sir.
Absolutely.
You can now watch the, you can go online and watch, if you get one of those citations, you can watch the alleged violation, so you can see for yourself. It should be ticketing you when you don't have an excuse, and you have crossed the line after it's turned red, so that...
Oh, I know my dad got one, he had a few choice words, and then he looked at the pictures and he said, "Oh, I'm not going to fight that."
I got one once when my sister was driving my vehicle, because the ticket's the owner. And sorry to my sister for mentioning it, but I did get the ticket for her, and so, she was going a little fast, so it didn't happen again, though.
There you go.
I saw the video, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and Madam Clerk?
Nay.
One nay, and I want to remind you of the additional action that needs to be taken before 5C.
I move at this time for the ministerial function of a censure of the mayor as follows. The council does not condone the taking of the option and keeping council out of the loop on this important decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just to clarify that, you know, I certainly don't believe there was any ill intent, so, but I also know that, you know, we do need to be kept in the loop, but I want to clarify for myself that I don't truly believe there was any ill intent in doing that. I think it was with the best intentions. While maybe it wasn't what, you know, it would have been helpful for the council to have been in the loop, but I don't think there was any misintentions with it.
As I said, the night that we found out, and I told Matt that night, had he come to us and said, "Hey, this is what I'm thinking about doing," we all probably would have agreed with him. I think it's very business savvy, so, but, agreed.
Additional comments? Yeah, I think so.
I think so.
Unless it's not about the actual police station site, because that's coming next.
It's got to be about this motion, yeah.
Okay.
Bruce Kelly, H-64 McKenzie Avenue. I think after four months, this should have been taken care of then, not brought up now. And one of the other things is that it was, you guys did voice your opinion then, that you did not approve of what he did. And now, to bring this up over four, like I said, four months later, I think it's kind of out of the, it should have been taken up then, not now. And I know one of the other things of, one of the reasons why it was brought up was about a site. I'll wait till then, and then I'll bring that up. Waiting four months, that's kind of being vindictive about something. Holding it in that long? Think about that, before you vote on this. Waiting four months. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Sir, there, Mr. Kelly, Bruce, if I may, did not wait four months, voiced opinions at the time, and the concern, speaking for myself, I am concerned about a precedent of the council being kept in the loop appropriately, bearing in mind that the council and the mayor each have very separate and very important complementary roles, and one not not to step on the other, and this is to make certain that it does not happen again. I think it needs to be stated clearly.
This...
It removed an option from contention that I, speaking for myself, and I imagine others, I know others, very much wanted to see, and I think it could have been done far better. And so, for the future, this is a way of expressing the will of the council that it won't happen this way again.
See, I asked if anyone had any questions to that. You're bringing up questions that I'd like to answer.
Your time's up. Anyone else from the council?
Just to clarify that this was raised back on March 15, or March 14, and I think even during the study session on the 13th, when we, when we learned about the matter, and action was requested subsequent to that, and those requests were not heeded, and so, I think, with respect to doing this, I think it's appropriate that we do this now for the reasons that Mr. Watson stated. Opportunity was provided earlier, wasn't taken, so it kind of forces us to act now or sanction this into the future, and I also have concerns about precedent that it would set for the future, so I agree with Mr. Watson that this is the appropriate time.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk? 5C.
Resolution 16-5150 directing staff to take all actions necessary to acquire a specific parcel of land to locate the new Council Plus police station, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents to complete the transaction for the acquisition of, fill in the blank.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to fill that blank in with the Woodbury site after much research and study, which we're going to show you tonight. I want everybody to see the reasons and what was involved in each of those sites.
A second.
Is...
I would just like to say that most of this has been online for months, most of this information. There's a little bit of new stuff maybe tonight, but most of this has been on the site for three, four, or five months, I would say.
Tim Carver, Chief of Police for Council Plus. The process began back in September. We selected a team of architects and engineers to help us with the process, and then identified a study group, and several of them are here tonight to help us as citizens from the community to give us their voice, the voice of the community. Throughout that process, we were looking at site selection and also the needs assessment for the facility. We got to the point where we went through several sites. The study group did it separately from the internal planning group, using criteria that were identified and developed by the subject matter experts. This selection, this last four sites, one of the sites is Woodbury, the other three sites are sites that were identified after the committee was done. So, I'll go through each one of these sites, discuss, try and keep an apple-to-apple comparison as far as, you know, we need a site for the building as programmed with about five acres. There are specific things that I'll address in each one, the cost of the property, acquisition costs, relocation costs, infrastructure that needs to be moved or removed, things like that, and I'll address any questions that you might have as we go. The first site that we're going to talk about is at Avenue B to the north, and then Creek Top to the south, 10th Street to the east, and then the railroad tracks to the west. There's a visual on the screen right now. For each one of the sites, we listed a pros and cons. The city actually owns 3.9 acres of the site. It would give us, if we wanted it to be bigger than that, we'd have to acquire other properties. There is a significant flood exposure in this site. It's within a 100-year flood plain, and as noted in the document, FEMA does not recommend or indicates that you should not build critical facilities like a police station in a flood plain. There is no opportunity for future expansion, except vertically. It's landlocked on the west by the railroad lines and the viaduct and Indian Creek. Like Creek Top, it would require replacement of Indian Creek Channel during the project at a cost of roughly $3 million. In addition to that, it requires the acquisition of businesses to the north for any future growth, and will require closure and vacation Avenue B, which is a thoroughfare or secondary street, and that would be very difficult to do. Or the closure of 10th Street, which is also one of the main roads to drive under the viaduct, which would be very difficult to do as well. The site is in close proximity to high-volume rail lines, rail operations. Accessibility is limited, as described above, and then there are other limited access to secondary roads, no access to main arterial roads, and no access to the interstate system. Poor visibility to the community because it's down below the viaduct. The timetable for acquisition costs are not conducive to a project, or positive project for properties outside what the city already owns. And then overall site development costs and suitability are negative. On the next page, these are the parcels, the red lines are the actual parcels for the properties. There are four, I believe, that are noted, or two that are noted that are owned by Chicago Northwestern that we would have to work to acquire within that 3.9 acres. Other than that, the rest of that property is owned by the city. The block here, at the bottom of the page, was actually owned by the state of Iowa, but when they transferred Highway 6 or Broadway to us, I believe that property was also transferred at that time. Any questions about that site? Okay. The next site is Cattlemen's, or referred to as Cattlemen's. It's the old Cattlemen's Foundry. This is what the site looks like on the right side of the page. As you look at it, that's the actual old Cattlemen's Foundry site, and then there's other properties that are owned by the city, and you'll see those below. To get sufficient space, it would require acquisition of all these properties, and four of these five are actually private properties with one parcel in the middle that's actually a city-owned property. As indicated, the flood exposure is Zone D, or Zone X, I'm sorry. It's located in a 500-year flood plain, and it's protected by a levy. Basically, that means, in FEMA language, that means build at your own risk. There is a threat, which is two blocks north from Indian Creek, and a levy accreditation has no impact on the flooding here. There has been discussion about improvements to Indian Creek. It is not in this area, it's further down, and it would not, those improvements would not reach this part of the community for some years. Second Avenue to Fourth Avenue, 11th Street to 12th Street, the city currently owns 3.06 acres. It's insufficient for the building as programmed. It requires acquisition of 0.81 acres, five parcels, and residences. Potential cost for that... Potential cost for that was roughly $530,000. From Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue, from Eleventh to Twelfth, that's 1.9 acres. The city currently owns only 20% of a parcel there, and it requires acquisition of the other 1.7% or 14 parcels of residences. The potential cost for that was 1.2 million. It would increase the site sufficiently for future growth. The site is in close proximity to high-volume rail traffic, the same one that you saw with the Avenue B site to the north. Site topography and geotechnical issues and configuration. There's a main sewer line that runs diagonally from the bottom right corner of your page through the site this way, that would have to be relocated. The cost to relocate that line is roughly $1 million. Other utilities that would require relocation within the infrastructure and within that red outline is another $1 million. Geotechnical reports indicate, a geotechnical report for the Cattlemen's Site itself indicates that it's recommended for light residential or park development with no basements, so that kind of prohibits building a basement there. In fact, I was told that we would have to build at least, I believe, a foot or more above the floodplain, which prohibits building any basement at all. Environmental cleanup has been conducted for the Cattlemen's Site, but there are areas that are not, have been excavated, and you're going to find, or they believe will find, foundations, concrete slabs, and at least one rail spur still present in the area that would have to be removed and prepped before the site could be used. It requires extensive excavation due to poor natural soil conditions below the surface. What that means is we would literally have to peel back the surface in this area that's been, was the old Cattlemen's Site, and go down to the subsurface, the clay surface, put a barrier down, and then rebuild it with a usable fill, which is an extensive cost as well.
Why would that be necessary if there's already been an initial environmental remediation on it?
It's not the contamination, it's the compaction of the materials that caused that to happen, because if it's not stabilized that way, either you do that, or you use pilings to correct it, like they did for the jail, to stabilize it enough, otherwise you're gonna have it, they described as an equal settling, so you have settling problems, which is not, especially when we talk about going vertically, that's a challenge to a building that's gonna be intact. Site accessibility. Site is landlocked by the railroad to the west, no access to main arterial roads, no access to the interstate system. The next page is the parcel map, and as I said, the city owns this parcel, that's the Third Avenue, then these three parcels are owned by the city, and this center parcel here, the rest of the properties would have to be acquired by the city. This is a utility map, to give you a better idea, oop, I skipped a couple, I apologize, I'll back up. There's limited visibility to the community, good from the east side of the viaduct, or eastbound lanes of the viaduct. Overall, site development costs and suitability are negative. Timetable for acquisition costs are not conducive to a positive project, and it requires the closure of Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue with utility relocations mentioned above, and I'll show you what those relocations look like, but the number that the Public Works or Engineering Office gave me is use $1,000 per linear foot for street and sewer replacement costs. But what do those utility lines look like? That's this map. Each one of those colors represents some type of roadway, like the pink color is the Collector Road, the orange is not seen because it's an arterial road, but then below that you'll see the other colors, and it describes sanitary sewers, the green one that I mentioned earlier that runs diagonally through the site, plus you have the other sewer lines, water supply lines, and other utilities that would have to be moved in the process. The next site that we're going to look at is Washington School. This is a polygon of the actual site that we talked about acquiring for the project. Washington School is this building here. This is Scott Street. There's a parking lot right here. I wish that mouse was a little darker. But all these other properties in this section would have to be acquired. Pros and cons of the site, good site accessibility, but will restrict accessibility to the residents to the north. The combined parcel as the map is laid out is 2.99 acres, not sufficient for current building plans. The school parcel itself is listed, and that parcel is from the boundary of the school on Scott Street and completes the rest of that shape there. Is 1.49 acres. Properties from Scott Street to Sixth Street, from Washington to Mill, would add another 1.7 acres and would probably go for, or would have gone for, roughly $924,000. Additional properties to create a 5.1 acre, 5.11 acre site, and I'll show you that in a second, or add another 1.4 acres is nearly a million dollars. Acquisition costs were calculated 140% evaluation, so the main parcel itself would be 1.294 or 1.198, 1.1 million dollars per acre. Additionally, areas to meet the 5.1, 5.11 acre site would be $991,000 per acre. Total appropriations for this, or total approximate cost would reach 2.69 million. Relocation costs, approximated at $10,000 to $15,000 per residence and $5,000 to $7,000 per rental unit, runs between $360,000 to $540,000. Infrastructure, there is no known need to relocate the original parcel on the original parcel, but there are others, additional parcels require moving a 24-inch transmission pipe at the cost of between half a million and a million dollars. The size and configuration of the site restricts expansion. There is little to no opportunity for that, except vertically. Demolition costs, Washington School property was estimated at $400,000. Scott Streets, by itself, would cost roughly $15,000 to remove. Additional parcels from Scott Street North is about $35,000. Georgia Street is 15, and Ross is 10,000, and Mill is another 10,000, for a total of $70,000 in removal of those streets. Original parcel properties, removal would cost roughly $130,000, and any additional parcel properties would be another $130,000 in the larger area. So the total cost for this would be $545,000 for the main parcel as described earlier, or $745,000 for the larger description. Construction delays, construction delays are calculated 5% to 8% per year of the total cost of the project. Anticipated to be one to two years. There are no delays in acquisition, if there are no delays in acquisition of the $18.5 million project, that would cost us between 925 to 1.4 million the first year, and roughly 1.85 to 2.9 million for a second year of delay. Site topography, specific elevation and configurations limit development, development capacity and/or increased development costs. Elevation, the lowest point on Sixth Street is at 996 feet. The highest point at Canesville and Maine, or North Maine, is at 1,008 feet. That's a 12-foot change in elevation from one end of the site to the other. Raising the site to the project, raising the site for the project would restrict access to Sixth Street. A good portion of the site would be used to maintain unusable slope. You'd have to raise the building up to sustain the slope of the building. Reducing the building footprint unless the site was expanded. The building would likely be perched above the neighborhood to the west and to the southwest. Expanded and possibly both sites would require retaining wall at the top of the site to protect the site, and that would cost roughly $144,000. It would require the vacation of Scott Street and others, depending upon the size and configuration. The flood risk, as shown on the map. The western one-third of the 2.9 acre site is actually in a floodplain, so this section here is all listed as being in the 100-year floodplain. The lowest floor has to be above the base flood elevation, which is one to three feet below that. It currently is one to three feet below that, so we'd have to raise it above that. Approximately $45,000 in filter to get the correct building height to start with. The original site development costs and suitability are negative. The timetable and acquisition costs are not conducive to the timeline. And to break it down so it's easy to understand, this is what the cost would be. Everybody see those? The bottom line is, on the page it says it's 1.06 million to 1.7 million for the main parcel, or if we showed the larger parcel, it'd be 1.085 to 1.3 million dollars per This is a flood zone map. The blue-colored area is in the 100-year floodplain, while the red is not. And the next one shows the five acre, 5.1 acre parcel shape in the yellow outline, and those additional costs that were associated with it I mentioned earlier. The last site that we'll discuss is the Woodbury Site. I'm gonna shrink this a little bit, so it all fits for now. So the yellow outline here is all of the parcel from the Woodbury Site, including The site itself is 18.68 acres. There are 10 usable acres. Eight of the acres are actually hillside or bluffs. The cost per acre is $88,000. It's a single property owner as opposed to multiple property owners. We currently have an option on the site to purchase it for $880,000. The site is shovel-ready. The first geotechnical report is positive. There's no issues that have been detected on the site at all. Demolition costs, none. Future expansion is quite favorable. Site accessibility, there are currently three access points from and to the site. There's direct access to secondary roads, access to main arterial roads, and access to the interstate. It's visible to the community as designed. The infrastructure and utilities, there are none that we're aware of that need to move at this point, and they're accessible nearby. Overall site development costs and suitability are positive for keeping the project on the timeline. And that's the end of the report I have right now, and I'll address any questions you might have.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you.
What I want to add to that discussion is that I brought with me a little more information. I think everybody knows that I've been a big proponent of that location longer than we've been looking...
Washington.
Yeah, Washington, I'm sorry. Longer than we've been looking at this current proposal for a police station. I started looking at this probably five years ago. For me, what really cinched it for me is I was working on an appraisal project and saw the properties on the west block had sold, and the sale prices were substantial. When I originally had started pulling these five years ago, they'd been on the market for a couple of years, values were pretty low. Not only did the majority of those properties sell at a significant price, the apartment building to the north, which would be in the expanded area that was discussed, is now pending, with a list price of $640,000. So it became really clear to me that just the cost of acquiring the properties outside of the school parcel, after these had recorded in April, meant that it was gonna be so expensive to use eminent domain to get them, because they have a deed recorded showing a market value that they paid. So unfortunately, that's where it became clear to me that the site was gonna be incredibly expensive to make happen. Very disappointed about it, but I had promised the taxpayers that I would never choose a site that would be so expensive that we wouldn't have the money to build the police station that they asked us to build. So I just wanted to share that information, and I have that data with me. If anybody'd like to see it after the meeting, I can provide it to you.
And for me, as I look at the situation, and indeed, there was the censure vote this evening, I think the council, if we had been in the loop sooner, as I believe we're obligated to be, and I think there was unanimous vote on that this evening, we could have, indeed, it was well-known for years, the feelings of my colleague, Councilmember White, as well as my similar feelings about keeping things in the downtown, my concern of becoming a suburb to Omaha, which is, I believe, quite borne out by the facts if we start moving core things to the eastern edge, very near the folks who decided to move to the country, 60 yards from the city line that pre-existed them. In other words, that you pay for their roads to go to their very nice homes, and they don't pay city taxes. So I have concerns about that, of depopulating the center. I think long-term, in 100 years, if we don't take care of that area, we're going to be taking care of it one day, one way or the other. I think ultimately, in this situation, we've been put into it by fact circumstances, some of which due to the mayor, some of which not due to the mayor, to be fair, where we are in a situation where the only site is on a cul-de-sac on the eastern, within a mile of the eastern edge of town. I don't know of anyone who thinks of that site as, appear anyway, at least that is expressed, that is extremely enthusiastic about this site. I might be mistaken. It appears at this point, it's the only one that's going to work in the short term due to a failure to plan, to make any of the other known options that, again, at least two of us were for for years, and we just apparently decided to do nothing with, weren't a part of that discussion. That concerns me deeply. I look forward, there have been some assurances that we won't abandon our downtown, so I look forward to continued roads and pedestrian and bike paths and things for retiring baby boomers and millennials, and I'll bring that up, until the cows come home, about how we supposedly aren't going to abandon that area. And however long I sit in this chair, I'll bring it up, as long as I live, because it's crucial that we don't become a suburb of strip malls. And my fear is, the more we move to the east, we will. I think Midland's Mall is a fantastic example, and half the population's too young to even know what I'm talking about, believe it or not, half the voting population, forget younger kids. But I think we have to think ahead. I think we, as a council, have stepped up tonight and said that we will be a part of the discussion, as I believe we are obligated to be under the city charter and why you elected us, and so this won't happen again. So I feel, by events, forced to accept something that I think is the only alternative to build the police station at this time, but I won't allow it to happen again.
I have to share some of those concerns foremost, because while there's been considerable good discussion about the economic factors involved in this decision, there's also some strategic communication that's taking place to many members, taxpayers, and people that have lived in this community for some time, and they feel as though that we are in effect abandoning the downtown area, that we're not giving sufficient consideration to future development, either downtown and the west end, and that we're, more importantly, signaling the problems in developing that area, not just for this project, but for any other project for that matter, because we've gone to great lengths to discuss the shortfalls of locations in around the downtown area. In the end, I feel as though that this decision was made in February, and that's why I had concerns about the process, and wish we were reviewing this and going forward, and here we are tonight.
Sir, can we have your name and address again for the record?
Dave Flavin, 307 North Forty Street. My statement is simple. Council Bluffs, you have lost consideration, are forgotten about the west end, and that you have totally forgotten about them, and yet shows it here too, in this police thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. I gotta say, and one of the things that was brought up is the size of the city hasn't changed and everything like that. This city has been wise by not annexing everything that was on the outside. I got... I gotta praise that for you and the councils before, for not taking in residential areas that we would've had to maintain and would've cost the city more. Like, on the police station here, now, no, it's not the best, and it should've, could've, we, and stuff on the property down there. Did, like I said, this been going on forever about it. This is the first time we had somebody that would step up, the chief, and get it done. Woodbury, the price, I think it's a great price. Plus, who owns that property? Heartland Families?
I'm private.
They're going to put that money back into the community. It might not be all in Council Plus, but some of it will be in Omaha, but it does go back to the community. It isn't, "I got it, I'm moving to Florida." So, you have to think about that, and the utilities and everything. No, it's not the best site. I even had somebody go, "Oh, why don't we build it on First and Broadway in that open space?" And I go, "Where you gonna park? And how tall is the building gonna be? We have the chance to build this, and it's just not for me. I'm gonna be gone probably before they build the next, or they have to expand, but we'll have the place to expand it." I was here when the first police department was right next door, and we had a city jail, we had city courts and everything. Then we went over to the courthouse, and we just didn't have, when we first got there, we didn't have that full building. The top floor was the sheriff's. And then we got that when they moved out. We have outgrown it, because the state requires other facilities, what we have to have inside, just not for, we, we don't need, we had a room to develop film. Now that's being used for CSI or whatever, their, their people. It is not big enough. I've been in that building, it, and stuff, and then you may, yeah, as you may know, I was a reserve, it's been twenty-some years ago. It was too small then. We outgrew it right after we got it. We should've never put it there. We should've built it somewhere else. And if I had my way, we'd be spending more money, not on a police station. I think we need a new city government building, and I know, we're gonna keep this one, because, darn it, we're, we're gonna move it. I mean, you come in here, and the heat's bad, the air conditioning's bad, and everything needs to be updated. And it would've been, my opinion is, we should've spent another twenty million and put another, a city government building with it, but that's too much money for this community to dish out all in one place. So, now you know where I stand on the city government and this building and everything else. Great building, be a great museum.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, sir.
I, I do think, if I may say briefly, that, uh, I think it's important, the figures have been given out of the cost. There were preliminary discussions, and I want to be very clear, very preliminary discussions, about how if you put the police station in an area that would leverage, that is, give you a two-for or a three-for effect for existing funding organizations, not just the one you're thinking of, but potentially that one too, uh, for areas that would help truly the economically poorest part, and I'm not making fun of anybody, I'm saying the truth, we're talking facts, poorest parts of our community, least educated in the areas with, generally with the highest crime. These would've been a shot in the arm, uh, for that area, and indeed, organizations will fund areas that help poorer folks, will help minorities, will help people. We have a significant population in our, in our city, in that two census tract square mile that we're sitting in right now, who a majority do not have a high school decree, degree or higher in this area. And so, what do we do to ensure the areas that are in the city, that pay city taxes, become better educated, have better jobs come in, have ways to help the existing people in the center and the west in particular, where our income is low on the whole? And again, I'm not making fun of folks, I choose to, to live in the middle, so I practice what I preach, but, uh, the only way you're going to help bring that up is if you invest in the future in these areas. In my belief, putting things, particularly if we remove the city hall, to the eastern edge of town, literally on a cul-de-sac next to areas, including my own mother, who lives outside of the city limits in a subdivision that was built, uh, the, the city line, I checked, uh, so mom, forgive me, but the city line was in that area in nineteen sixty-seven, and her house was built two-hundred yards, two-hundred, give or take, from that line eight years later. And folks like that said they did that to move into the country, and m- my mother included is from the country, way up in a township north of Neola, the, the family farm that's been up there for over a hundred years now. So, truly in the country. A lot of folks, including a lot of my friends, so I don't win any, any, uh, any support by saying it, but it's true, live in, in that area, because you, you get to go to your job, usually in Omaha, uh, and you get to drive through the city streets, and your last half-mile at most, you have to pay for yourself, but the city taxpayers are paying for it till that point. I'm not suggesting we annex all the way to Oakland or anything like that, but the areas that are right next to town, that are on streets, many of whom, again, including my mother, forgive me, uh, have city water, um, but don't pay a cent towards, towards the roads in this community, which, in her case, are about sixty yards from her house. Putting it over there in areas that will grow, I have no doubt those areas will grow, but most of them will be not in our school district, the majority of us live in Council Plus schools, like I do, um, won't be in our city, so they won't be paying city taxes, and we can't serve them anyway, because I just don't see how we can use city funds to, uh, serve areas. So, putting it that far over, I genuinely believe it's also an image problem. We've got a lot of hard-working people on the west end and in the center, and, and there's nothing to be gained by saying it, because the areas that tend to vote are to the east, so there's nothing to be gained by pointing this out. But those are areas that tend not to vote much, tend not to get much listened to, just in general. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody in particular, but just in general. We all know it. Um, and moving things away from them is not right, in my view. So, I hope that as we look forward to the future, that we'll continue to invest in our downtown, and I won't hear things like, "It's gonna cost too much money to put it down there, it's not near critical infrastructure such as the police station anymore." I hope I'm gonna hear, "Yes, I support a vibrant downtown, so that we continue to grow," and a lot of times you'll hear online, "Why don't we have this restaurant? Why does Omaha have that?" We're never going to be as big as them, I don't wanna be, I doubt many of you wanna be, that's what you tell me, but you do want more things. You're excited about the things we're getting, you'd like to see more unique things. You're not gonna get that if we don't bring up the number of people living there, we don't increase the number of edu-, the amount of education. If we don't do that, we become progressively, as we are in the census, poorer and older, and I wanna be older someday too, but we're just not gonna sustain ourselves as a genuine city. We're gonna truly become a suburb. In much of the twentieth century, we had a lot of, of attempts to try to, to get out of that by tearing down what made us unique, our current slogan about unique, unlike everywhere else on purpose. Well, we gotta stop tearing that stuff down, and we need to start worrying about those areas too. Or in a hundred years, we're just gonna be a bunch of strip malls on the east edge of town, and a genuine suburb of Omaha, and I don't want that. And so, I'm gonna do everything I can to stop it, and in the future, I hope, on these projects, we actually don't short-change. And I believe, I think it was the best of intentions, I, I disagree fundamentally, but I think we short-change the idea of building in a place that is already existing, always building new, always doing urban sprawl. I just don't think that's the way of the future.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Lucille Gurgievac.
Can you pull, can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Lucille, my last name's Gurgievac. Uh, I reside here in Council Plus, of course, and I own two properties here in Council Plus. I'm a senior, uh, citizen on a fixed income, and I did attend a lot of the presentations that went on, that was presented by the committee in the very beginning, and my, and kudos to those people, because, because they did a lot of hard work, they did a lot of research, and they got to the very bottom of every issue that should be addressed to a police department. I, I'm not in favor of a police department being downtown in any downtown. Do, am I concerned about preserving our downtown? Yes. What would I like to see down there? I would like to see, uh, more new businesses, I would like to see entertainment. When I go downtown, that's what I wanna be. I wanna dine, I want to, I wanna be entertained. I don't wanna hear sirens, I don't, uh, you know, I think that that, um, I don't really think that that's a good fit for us, and I don't really think that it's been a good fit for where it is across the street, as far, but then, of course, that's my view. Okay. Um, I got real excited about, I got excited about the cost and about the amenities and about the size of the building and about the promise of history, it being, having the ability to go on for fifty to a hundred years, and not to be, not to be, uh, reinvented, uh, i- in the near future. Taxpayers can't afford that, and to begin with, taxpayers, even, even if you're not on an income, a fixed income, nobody likes paying taxes. I mean, we all like, we all like to reap what they bring, thanks be to God for that, but we don't like paying them. And, um, I talked to, uh, I talked to the seniors, uh, seniors here in Council Plus. I addressed a meeting, um, of probably maybe thirty-five to forty, uh, people, and at that particular time, we thought that we were gonna get the whole package for, uh, twenty million. And, uh, and, and everyone was really excited about that, because where else are you gonna get a better deal? And so, I, I'm gonna ask each and every one of you to, um, vote for the Woodbury Site, because in my mind's eye, um, that's your, that's our best choice, um, now. Is it gonna be pleasing to everyone, everybody? No, absolutely not. Um, that's an impossibility. But is it, is it the, is it the best of the best? From everything that I've seen, from everything that I've heard, it's the best that we can do. I mean, if, if it is accepted as a site, I think it's gonna go down in history as being the most economical, the most, um, uh, elegant, if you will, uh, sites available for that kinda money. We're never gonna see that again, and if we pass this up, if we pass this up, well, that's gonna be a shame. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to briefly say that I share your concern about doing things downtown. I just, in a community such as ours, that's not wealthy, we're not, it's not a value judgment, we're just not. The only way you're gonna get streets and infrastructure in the downtown to have those restaurants and businesses come in, like other places very near us, is if we spend the tax money to put those there, and without a police station or other stuff there, it's gonna be tougher to justify putting stuff in an area. They're gonna say, "Why are you gonna put it down there where it's all junk and old and et cetera?" And I say those things, living there, I'm not, I don't mean, I don't agree with those expressions, but a lot of people do. And so, that's, that's what I concern, uh, concern about, but you raise a lot of very valid concerns. Well, thank you, thank you.
My name is Tom Schmidt. I, um, my physical address is two-two-eight Ridgewood Drive, which is about two miles outside the city limits, but I'm here today representing one of the oldest businesses in downtown Council Plus. And I sit over there, and I'm not sure what community some of you are talking about. I look at the west end, and I see a brand-new sports facility being, an old sports facility being made new. I see dilapidated buildings on West Broadway coming down, and plans for new buildings going up. I see one of the most expensive and astonishing developments on the river that any community could have. In the fifteen years I've lived here, I've seen one new viaduct tying downtown to the west, and the other viaduct completely redone. I've seen millions of dollars invested in downtown, from the Methodist Church to the Arts Center, in the old Harvester Building. This town is alive, it's moving forward, it's got a lot to do, and one of the ways to get it done is to make fiscally sound decisions. You cannot build other events, other entities, if you can't, if you oversp-, excuse me, overspend on what you're building right now. The voters of this community were promised that for twenty million dollars, the men and women who protect them would finally have a facility that would serve their needs. Like it or not, my business has been downtown, I'd love to keep the police station downtown, but it's not financially possible. And if we're going to move forward in the community, our number-one decision should be financially responsible, and that's what this recommendation is. And it's not that we're stealing from somebody else, you know, you talked, Nate, you talked about the education and income levels. Well, that may be true, but the police station's been downtown during all that. The only time downtown really fell apart, the police station was downtown. Where the police station is located isn't gonna make or break downtown. What's gonna make or break downtown is other decisions, your fiscal investment, business people. I've been the publisher of the Nonpareil for fifteen years. I've, we've reported hundreds of stories on the redevelopment of downtown, and not one investor has ever said to me, "We went downtown because the police station was downtown." They went downtown because they believed in downtown Council Bluffs and what it offers, and taking one small part of downtown and relocating it is not going to destroy downtown. It simply is not. It's going to open the door for future opportunity. I encourage you to support this motion.
If I may say so, I look forward to support, hopefully signed in the paper, in the editorial pages, that, for those continued investment in the downtown for projects that will cost money and will be for the future of our community, and they have to require a long-term vision, longer than many of us in this room will be alive, uh, towards, towards the future of those areas. And the reason they come downtown is because we invest in it, and in a community, again, without a great deal of funds, the more we move reasons away from that area that we all agree on should be funded, the less likely you're going to get that area funded. Unless we all agree, and I hope we do, that we need more, we need more bike trails, we need more pedestrian lanes, we need more economic developments, not strip malls, but actual things that, that demonstrate the vitality of our community, and those aren't always, and seldom are upfront, the cheapest options. They don't win the developer fees, they're not print on, on the edge of town, but long-term, we have to decide as a community, do we want to continue to be a town? Do we want to continue to have a newspaper? Questions like that, do we want to not be the World Herald? The idea is, no disrespect to them, uh, do we want to continue to be a community? And for that, we need a genuine center. And so, moving a piece could establish a precedent if we just look at beginning dollars and cents, so I, I, I look forward to not hearing arguments about how, "When I want a new road in the downtown to help business come in, or to help children have a place to play near, near a green site, about how it's gonna cost too much, and the cost-benefit analysis doesn't pan out, because there isn't enough existing infrastructure or enough things to support it." I won't hear any of that, because you can't have it both ways. So, I look forward to, to seeing continued investment in these areas and not hearing other arguments, because I won't have it. You gotta pick.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much for your input tonight. And we have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. All right.
Resolution sixteen dash one-five-one authorizing and adopting the updated operations and maintenance manual for the Missouri River Industrial Park Levy in connection with FEMA certification.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is... Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, kind of Y-word. Talking about that, I know I sent you an email regarding the Deb Real Estate wanting to gift their property to the city, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but let Dick Wade know maybe.
Yeah, I emailed back.
I didn't, forget it.
My position on it, so.
Forget it.
I can, I can do that, yeah.
No way. The taxpayers shouldn't get stuck with their business decision.
The taxpayers are stuck.
Well, they, they are, but we ought not to let them off the hook legally. If they claim they can't afford it, fine, we'll sue them and we'll try to get the taxpayers' money, but we cannot let them off the hook.
Well, I don't think we let them off the hook. Dick, correct me if, correct me if I'm wrong, Dick, but they, we would lien their property, and then they could go to the county and request tenures to repay that lien.
That's better than letting them forgive the debt.
They have no intention of paying it.
Well.
Eventually, we would, would have to foreclose on the property taxes.
Sure.
And my concern there is that it just ties the property up for a number of years without any chance of getting our, our monies reimbursed.
Yeah, but I can't condone, I can't condone, they, they, that taxpayer paid a fortune to have the levy around their property, and then it.
In the banking world, we call that throwing good money after bad.
That may be, but those folks who made that made a killing, and I don't think they should get away with it.
Nate, one thing I guess I would like to point out, the last time they came forward, they wanted us to share any proceeds if we sold it for more than they owed.
Well, that was just, I agree, that was just plain insulting, and some of those folks own quite a bit of stuff, and they should be ashamed of themselves.
But what I would like to say is that I know there has been some interest in that site for economic development over the years, but.
Then they can buy.
Well, but we can sell it at a price that somebody could afford to do it, and recover all of what we've got in it. I mean, we just need to keep an open mind on it as we work through it, since it's not on the agenda, there's probably some more information.
If, if somebody would tell us they'd pay us an amount, a third party, that would get us in the clear, and they were willing to sign to that effect, well, yeah, but just taking it on and hoping they do it, that doesn't make sense to me.
I just, I just knew there'd been like three different parties over the last two years that had looked at it.
I appreciate knowing that. That's, that's a good point. Thank you, that's a good point.
It just never, you know, with thirty on.
And we have taken on the debt, the associated debt, so that's on the books.
You're right. No, that's, you're right, that's a good point.
All right, we are on five E.
We didn't actually vote on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we had five, five D.
So we're still on five D, all, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Five E, I'm sorry.
Resolution sixteen dash one-five-two, making changes to the positions assigned in the Information Technology Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Wait a minute.
Oppose.
I want to speak, sir.
Dave Flavin, three oh seven North Fortieth Street. After thirty-five years in IT departments and that for my career, I don't understand why you want to change positions, definitions, and everything else.
We're adding a GIS position, which the city currently doesn't have, and each department within the city uses GIS mapping, and so we're hiring a professional to do that rather than go through the county, because it's such an important and vital function for the city.
I'll have a statement later.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Resolution sixteen dash one-four-three, authorizing the execution of a six-year contract between the city Public Health Department and the Iowa DNR for the collection of ambient air monitoring and sampler data.
Motion to postpone.
To June twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
To June twenty-seventh, yes.
The contract expires July first, so.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
I'm, I'm sorry, I turned you away, I don't think my colleague had a chance to vote.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Perfect.
Applications for permits and cancellations, six A, one through ten, and six B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Before we go any further, I'd like to have the council refer back to four C, it was a public hearing, and there's a resolution authorizing the vacation, disposal of some right-of-way there. You had a recommendation from both staff and the planning commission to deny that, and I just want a clarification as to what the intent of the motion was when you made it, Melissa.
The staff recommendation? Sorry, I should have said that.
That's what I thought I was voting on.
The second concurs?
Yeah, that's what I thought I was voting on.
Council voting concurs?
Yes, that's what I thought. I misunderstood.
I guess I should, yeah, I should have said that, sorry.
So everyone's in concurrence?
Yes. With the recommendation.
With the recommendation, yeah.
Thanks, Dick.
Any citizens requesting to be heard?
That's not the way of the resolution.
Any official requests to be heard, Jody?
Bruce Kelly, eight sixty-four McKenzie Avenue, bike trail. And I take offense on one subject that somebody said, all the people, all they have is high school educations. You gotta remember, yeah, West Broad, you know, west end of Council Bluffs, at one time, Ninth Street in Omaha was warehouses, John Deere, butternut coffee, oil, Bemis bag, and then we had Vickers, we had other industries all down there. We all worked there with a high school education, we made great money. Council Bluffs never closed on the west end, and you're going, "What? That Broadway Bowl was open twenty-four hours a day for shifts to, to be there all the time." And the other thing else, I have a deal, a picture that I carry with me because it's a hundred percent right. Your teacher said that you would never amount to any, you know, find a job just looking out the window. I guess I won that battle, and I made good money.
If I may say, Bruce, I'm not trying to insult people, my, my great-grandpa, Lester Goodman, worked at Kellogg's here in town, and my grandparents, Lester and Bernus, lived on Fourth Avenue in a house that got torn down when Keyes Real Estate's parking lot got expanded, so.
Just a little history lesson.
Yeah, so I just tell you that, you know, they, like a lot of folks, they, they worked like crazy, and they worked hard.
Had all of downtown Omaha, shopping, everything.
Sure, and, and what they.
We all worked over there.
Sure, and, and what I, what I want to, just so you, there's no misunderstanding with my comment, they worked, literally my grandma to the bone, you know, ironing, great-grandma, ironing shirts during the depressions to bring in some extra income. So I know they worked really hard for their kids to get that education, and I want more people to get it, because our future, that's where the way the world's going, you can't get somewhere unless you get an education. We have so many kids who, in their circumstances, don't get one, and we gotta do everything we can to change that so that they have jobs of the future. I, that's just, that's just the way it is.
People don't want to work outdoors, people don't want to work light brick.
A lot of them don't, that's true.
And that's our problem, we have a lot of jobs. They're calling for welders all over this country.
Trades are great, my dad was a steam fitter, I understand.
They're looking for steam fitters all over the country.
Sure, sure.
They want rednecks on these rigs and everything, but people don't want to do it.
Well.
The other thing is, now, the companies don't want to train them, they want them to go to a school and pay for it themselves and then come there.
Oh, trust me, when I, when I, when I, when I paid mine off five years after my mortgage, all, I understand my student, I, so I, I'm with you, working three jobs through school, so I don't want to make it sound like I've got some sort of prejudice against people. I, I'm personally, I feel very blessed to the product of, of three generations that worked from literally nothing, to a point where it got me to where I could work my way through school with three jobs, and I want more kids to have that chance.
And I'm looking at people here, she worked her, I know, she has worked almost every day of her life.
Sure.
And she's proud of herself, she's proud of the west end.
I have no disrespect, it's just the jobs of the future require this.
And I'm proud of the west end and everything else, and I do, and I'm the guy that tells you, I don't believe in an east and west end, I don't believe in it. I gave that up a long time ago.
I wish it didn't exist.
And I drove down Broadway just a couple days ago, and I said, "I'm just gonna look where there used to be a stuff, somebody else has built something there." It's slowly developing in, down there, it's not as fast as I want, but you gotta remember, I was there when Frito-Lay was here, it's gone, it's Texas. The green elevators, the one hit, closed up, the other one, we bought them out, and then you get down there, Omaha Standard, everything like that, Cattlemen, Blue Star.
Sure.
And all that, that was our, basically our main industry and everything in downtown Omaha.
And they all.
We were thriving, and like I said, we were the river rats of.
They're all in other countries now, a lot of that.
Yep, and stuff, and we make it, we had bars everywhere, we.
And we're not gonna change.
We argued all the time.
And unfortunately, we're not gonna change, I don't think, if somebody's telling you they're gonna bring all that back, they're lying to you to get your vote.
No, they're not.
You know, they're not bringing it back.
Those people down there are proud people.
I don't disagree, I have family down there.
And just like I said, I lived on McKenzie, I live on McKenzie Avenue, I was the sixth house, and there's not a, on my side of the street, I was out in the country.
Sure.
And there's not a lot, there, there's a house in every lot now. It's progress, look at all the progress we've made. Everything at the top of my hill was a big bank, and they built, tore it all up and built houses. Reason I told you about why McKenzie Avenue is paved, that's because they wanted a blacktop, and I said, "Nah, maybe, Willis, wait a minute, how much is this? Five hundred thousand dollars." I said, "How much to pave it? One million." I said, "I can, well, you can save five hundred thousand dollars if we just pave it, pave it now." And it was brought up to the council and everything.
It goes your five minutes.
You've had a long day.
He just wanted me to go home.
Sorry.
No, I, I got a basketball game to watch.
Okay. But I, like I said, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
It's good to see you, Bruce, and thank you for letting me borrow that book.
Anything else for the cause? Thank you all for your patience.
I got one, too. Dave Flavin, three oh seven North Fortieth. The last few working days down Play, by Playlin Park, there's been trucks moving up and down Fortieth Street. I've actually felt the trucks moving up and down Fortieth Street in my living room. Now, there's something going on, they're either way too heavy, or the infrastructure's starting to decay in there. Somebody needs to do some checking down there.
We'll check, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
They're doing that construction.
At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluffs Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community.